At this time, I'll call our meeting to order. I will ask our board members to make sure and anyone else that's speaking that you speak into the microphones. And we apologize for the fact that we have the fans going, but it's the fans or it's going to be extremely difficult to be in here because it'll be so hot. And the good news is, we do have a new system being put in and maybe by the next meeting, everything will be nice and cool like it's supposed to be. At this time, I'll ask Commissioner Legg if he'll lead us in on our invocation, followed by our pledge of allegiance. If you will, all please rise.
Father, we thank you for this opportunity to meet again this evening. We ask the Lord that you be with each member of this board, that they make the right decision for the betterment of the town. We ask that you bless each and every one who's in a position to accept a position on committees. We ask that you be with our firefighters, our police department, and our military around the world. I'd like to ask you to bless my family and the families that are all present here tonight. We would never fail to give you the praise. Amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You made me seated. And again, we welcome everyone here this evening. We're glad to see the turnout and we're also glad that we've had a great number of people volunteer to be on our boards and committees. At this time, do I have a motion to approve our agenda?
So be it.
Have a motion to approve. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. The first thing we have is a consideration of re-establishing a citizen board of adjustments. The current board of adjustment has been made up of the five commissioners with Mayor Protem serving as chair, and this board has decided that they would prefer to move back to a citizens board of adjustment. And so at this time, I'll ask for the nominees from our nominating committee to be read.
Do we need a motion? Oh, Dan, do we need a motion to re-establish the citizen-based board of adjustments?
Yes.
Then so move.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. Now, do we have the nominees?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Commissioner Legg and I met last week and went over all the applications. We appreciate everybody. I think we've almost got everything filled. As far as I know, I think every seat, every position's going to be filled now. We have a, well, I'll get to that in a second. With the appearance commission, we've got Rebecca Beck. All these, all these seats will be expiring in February 2020.
At this time, you should just be doing the board of adjustment.
Oh, just board, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. Just the board of adjustment.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. So we had applicants Brian Marley, Carla Welsh, Elizabeth Cooper, Joanne Scolera, Elise Craver, and as alternates, we've got Harold Dove. And my wife Josie has pulled her application and Sue Moody has graciously applied to be the second alternate for the board of adjustments. And all these seats will be expiring in February 2020.
Okay, so we have the list of members and just for interest, all seven members will need the special training. So that's, that's one thing that's important. So that way, the alternate will be able to fill in at any time as needed. So we'll have a quorum. So have a board that has been nominated. Do I have a motion to accept the board of adjustments, citizens board of adjustment?
Please accept.
Have a motion to approve the board of adjustment. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. Congratulations for those of you that have agreed to serve. Your training was going to be April 15th.
At 5:00.
At 5:00.
Yes, ma'am.
And your first hearing is also April 15th at?
6:00.
At 6:00.
Yes, ma'am, ma'am.
At this time, I'll ask for the recommendations of the nominating committee for the various other committees and commission appointments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So for the appearance commission, we have Rebecca Beck. For the historic preservation commission, we have Sharon Reeves. For the lake advisory committee, we have Marion McLean and Mark Shields. And for the veterans affair committee, Veterans Affairs Committee Commission, we have Elizabeth Cooper. And for the festival committee, we have Pastor Michael McGill.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the recommendations for the?
So be it.
Have a motion. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. Next, we have an update on the part of grant application, the golf course property. I turn it over to Ms. Adams.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor, Board of Commissioners. You have a memorandum that I prepared that with the help of Rachel Cotter. She has spoken to NC DOT and she has received written confirmation that the town will be able to build Phase 1 without DOT requiring an off-site, off-site road improvements. However, they do want to limit the number of ingress and egress points to only two. And so she has indicated that we will need to move the Phase 1 access point across from Fairway Drive. This is fairly easy to do, she has said, but it will increase Phase 1 costs due to longer entrance drive to access the programmed improvements. We will only be able to afford a gravel drive and the district engineer has reviewed the Phase 1 improvements. And then below that, I have a bullet with the written confirmation from District Engineer Richie Hines. And that reads, "This is to confirm that we, NC DOT, will allow the initial driveway to be permitted with no roadway improvements required. This assumes that the driveway will serve 20 to 25 parking spaces for walking and canoeing as we discussed earlier this week. Any future modifications to the site, expansion, addition of features, or future phases will require additional reviews." And then he's indicated, "Please note that at some point in the future, I expect that the park will reach a tipping point that will trigger roadway improvements." The following items will need to happen in order for us to compete, complete the grant application by May 1st. McAdams has to complete the cost estimate, which I have that attached. McAdams is to complete the master plan report, finish the comprehensive plan, and then prepare the Partif application. Town of Hope Mills to stand by for informational requests. Town of Hope Mills would adopt the CIP showing matching funds for the application. If the scope of Phase 1 costs more than her estimate, more than $700,000, and I believe if you'll look, the estimate right now is her detailed estimate, which is the following two pages after that, is $730,319.35. We may need to match more than 50% just to get the elements of the project built or pay for infrastructure improvements Partif will not, such as parking and the access road. Town of Hope Mills would need to adopt the comprehensive plan and master plan for the park. Rachel will need the minutes documenting this. Town of Hope Mills will have to contact our Partif representative to lobby for the project. Town of Hope Mills to provide data requests in a timely manner. And one item that's not on here that in speaking with her and also with, with Lamarcos, our new Parks and Rec Director, we would need to lobby our representatives. So John Zoka would have to get behind the project and even Senator DeViere. The timeline tentative for planning purposes only. We have missed the April 1st courtesy review. May 1st, the Partif application is due. Following that, August, September, the grant awards are announced. If awarded, we move forward with design and construction. For design work to be reimbursed, it must be completed after the contract is signed. September, October to December, we're looking at developing CDs and securing permits. January 2020, public bid phase. February 2020, contractor notice to proceed. And July-ish 2020, ribbon cutting based on six months' construction schedule. Please see the attached draft cost estimate for Phase 1 golf course improvements. Those are the next two pages. Raw costs are around $730,250. The town will still have the design and consulting services on top of that. There is a good amount of contingency and overhead built in and markup broken out separately. We should budget for that, but hopefully, we can keep any design contingency to a minimum. Rachel has an escalation at 4% a year and it's soon to be 6%. And based on all of this and in consultation with Mr. Morrison and our finance director, we are not recommending moving forward with the Partif application. We just don't see where we're going to have the money next year to not only match, but to have a contingency above the 300, 400,000. So if it were another couple of years pushed out, then, you know, yes, we maybe could look at it, but we're also looking at, Commissioner Bellflowers has asked that we bring back budget proposal for McAdams to look at the Heritage Park piece. And our recommendation would be to move forward with that and next May be looking at applying for that. I'm going to let Mr. Morrison come up and speak a little bit about why we are making this recommendation. He's got some talking points and he would like to kind of weigh in a little bit. So, thank you. And please speak loudly.
Okay.
So we can hear you. You're soft spoken, so.
All right. Madam Mayor, Board of Commissioners, I just wanted to give my expertise based on previous applications. I've done four of these in previous locations. The one thing?
You gotta yell.
Sorry?
You gotta yell louder.
Look into that mic.
Yep, there you go.
Can you hear me better?
Yeah, better.
So a couple of things I've learned, a rush application is not looked upon favorably. In other words, if we were to put the application together that didn't garner the points that they say we, you know, we should be going for as far as elements and not having all the pieces, including the comprehensive master plan and the master plan, you gotta, you gotta consider those are worth four to seven points, which is a lot of points. And not having those things adopted, you know, could lessen our chances of getting a grant. Second to that is the financing piece. So we have to agree to match the funds, but what I've learned in previous applications, there's never, there's always a contingency plan that we haven't accounted for. So above the match funds, I've always had to come with a certain amount of funds for unforeseen conditions. So those are a couple of things that I've learned, having applied for four Partif grants and managed the construction for four Partif grants. All of those things have happened as far as the cost. I've never had one to come in where the exact amount of money is what we spent. There was always a tad bit more based on some things we didn't know about. It could be environmental things. It could be undercutting, things of that nature. And so for those reasons, I did recommend that we kind of step back and put a better application together. Give us more time to not only approve the comprehensive master plan, but give everybody a chance to read it and understand it. So with that, I'd be glad to take any additional questions you may have for me.
I had a question, Madam Mayor, just for, mainly for Drew, maybe, I don't know, but why, why is the insurance and bonding 128 grand for such a small, I mean, that's crazy.
On this schedule? Yeah, that Rachel put this together, so, and we, we just received this. So honestly.
I mean, that seems kind of strong to me.
Yeah. We've not really had a chance to look at all these numbers.
I just had, that was the only thing popped off the chart in my quick review.
Yeah, I probably, like, yeah, Drew said it. She probably based it on other projects similar to this size. That's pretty much where she came up with the cost estimates, so.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I want to go ahead and just make a motion that we not submit a Partif grant.
You gotta talk to your mic.
I want to go ahead and submit a mo, make a motion that we not submit a Partif grant for the golf course this year.
Okay. Do we have a motion? Do we have any discussion on that motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir?
How far is this going to set us back in the development of that property?
Well, it shouldn't set us back as far as development any. I mean, and I know there's a, there's a plan to put together a phase so that people can begin to use it in the interim. And if that's the case, we can still do that. We can still allow people to begin to enjoy the park as we move further with the development of the master plan and construction documents, if that's your pleasure to move forward with that.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of not doing a Partif grant at this time, raise your right hand.
For the golf course.
Singing the other, golf course.
For the golf course, yeah.
Well, I think my, my thoughts are, maybe you can help me with this, but I don't think we can get one together for anywhere else and do a good job by May 1st, especially with the first review for April 1st. I don't see how we can write one this year and be effective. Am I right in saying that or can you?
You're right, because we still have to go through the same process, the comprehensive plan and whatever. Say, for instance, if we were going to do Heritage Park, we still would have to approve a master plan for Heritage Park also.
Correct.
If I can, what I recommend we do, I would recommend we still move forward in the future with a Partif grant for the golf course, but step back and go through some of the steps. And one of the things that we haven't done, typically, we like to have the representative come down and walk the project with us. That way, he or she could advocate better for the project once we get them details. And then they can advocate for us better in Raleigh when they're presenting the project for the folks who are going to vote for it. And I would really like to have our representative, Jen Beetle, even come down now, if we don't move forward the Partif grant, at least come down and look at the project with us still.
Right.
So we can get some pointers from her as we apply for it, if we want to apply for it next year.
Right.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Lamarcos, thank you very much for your comments. I agree with you. We're not there. We will not make May 1. We haven't adopted the comp plan. We haven't adopted the master plan for the golf course. And there may be future and more discussions later on this month that will not meet the May 1 deadline. So it's very prudent for us to not submit it at all for this year, for the golf course or any other park, because we're not there. Now, with that said, I'd like the board to consider going back to the original priority that after the Lake Park was finished, that the next project would be Heritage Park. And I, and I would, I would hope that the board proceeds in conducting and authorizing a master plan for Heritage Park, as that's the next project that surely will be done between now and next May. And then after that, we can revisit the golf course when our numbers or our financing funding may look more realistic. So do I need a motion to do that with or?
I don't, I don't think at this time, we need to because, and that's, it wasn't.
Well, the, the funding for McAdams to do that is, we're going to put it, we're going to plug it into the budget.
That's what I mean.
So if you approve the budget, you're approving that.
That's good.
Then we can move on then.
That, that's good. So I hope that the board seriously gives us some thought about as we're moving forward.
There's also some additional grants that we can acquire and those would be in reference to the fact that you are making it more pedestrian friendly down there.
Right.
And so you don't have to write a Partif grant. There's some different grants you can write. And some of those are local grants. So every little bit is, a phase of that could be used to write a local grant. And we might be able to accomplish it piece by piece because it is going to give us not only another place for us to have activity, but we also can access that area easier. And anytime you can do that, you can apply for certain pedestrian grants.
And just phase it in.
Yes.
Yeah. Which is the smart approach, right, Lamarc?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Mayor, did we have a chance to look at that grant information that Michael Seals forwarded to us, to NC State?
We're, we're looking into it. Yeah, yeah.
Because we still got some things to finish, Phase, Phase 2, whatever you want to call it, down to Lake.
Right.
And Heritage Park accordingly.
Right. Yep.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
One thing about, we're further ahead now than we were this time last year or this time last month.
I can't hear him.
I do agree with Mr. Bellflowers that we need to take action on the Heritage Park, that we need to, to move forward with that. It's been put on the back burner so many times. It's, it's time for us to pull it out of the, out of the pile cabinet and move forward with it.
Did Commissioner Bellflowers or Commissioner Larson have any other news to announce tonight?
Well, I'm waiting on the mayor to ask that.
Waiting on the mayor to ask?
Yeah, about the golf course property.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
This week, we had a briefing on Monday night about opening the golf course where it was presented, an estimated $100,000 to open it up. Now, I think we all know in this room that $100,000 is a lot of money and it can be applied to a lot of different existing projects that we've got going now, to include finishing up the Lake Park. So that prompted me to think about, well, there may be one other avenue left or one opportunity on the pathway forward. So I sent the board an email asking for permission, consensus from the board, to contact the property owners of the parking lot that's adjacent to the golf course property to open up the door and start a conversation and see where it goes and maybe, just maybe, we might be able to work out some kind of arrangement for the board to consider. So I called Mr. George Bijou, I think that's his name, B-I-J-U. On Thursday, he called me back and was very, very friendly about it. And he was out of town, but he was available over the weekend to discuss an opportunity for us to use the parking lot without any lease. I'm going to stop there because for me to continue, I would have, I would jump over another commissioner who also had a conversation, and this happened on Saturday, and that would be Commissioner Meg Larson. Then I'll come back.
Mine was impromptu. I was at opening day and I was introduced to the other property owner that shares the property with Mr. George, Mr., you can't hear me? On opening day? Better? On opening day, I was introduced to the other property owner who shares ownership with Mr. George at the golf course. And he had been given information that the town was looking to open it back up and he has also given his okay to allow the public to use the parking lot without any cost.
We just have to get some legal paperwork done.
Just have to get some legal paperwork done by our attorney for liability purposes for them to make sure that they're not held liable for anything, but they were very...
Fourth right?
Yeah, they were just very matter-of-fact, like, yep, nope, no problem. And so it's a go.
So Mayor, I would like to make the motion to the town board tonight to direct the town manager to begin the process of crafting an MOU between the town and the property owners of the parking lot to allow the public to park their cars there as we begin to open the formal golf course to the public to use at the end of the month.
And if I may, if there's no handicap parking spaces designated, that we just take care of that, if that's okay with the board?
I was going to recommend that you ask Mr. Cisco, because I know he's looked at that area. Would it be all right with you, Ms. Adams, if he speaks in direction of that parking lot? I know that there was some thoughts on that.
Yeah.
Mr. Cisco, would you mind, would you mind coming to the microphone and addressing what we needs, might need to be done to the parking lot in order for us to use that space?
The parking lot itself is probably...
You have to pull your mic up. You have to talk right into the mic.
The parking lot itself is probably fine without, you know, going and actually walking it.
Can't hear you.
Yeah, you got to talk louder.
Just hold that thing in.
The parking lot itself is probably fine without actually going and walking through it and seeing what it looks like. The area that we're going to have to be mindful of is, even though we're going to have the parking lot open, is what part of the walking trails and how do folks with disabilities gain access to it? Because we still have to take into consideration running and cross slopes for everything. So the parking is one part of it. The actual portion for use is a different animal. So we have to actually look at that and assess that.
Mr. Cisco, do we, do we have to, do we have to make parks ADA compliant when we make no structural changes to the park? When there's no, no struc, no structural changes at all?
You're changing the use. You are changing the use from something that used to be, we are using car paths of a golf course and now opening it up for walking trails. And it's not been used for that in the past and it's been sitting dormant for years. So they, the government looks at that as a change of use and we have to do our best to comply with it, barring the actual exceptions that they have in their policies and law.
So basically, you're saying we just need to mark certain areas of the park ADA accessible?
We'll have to identify them, yes, sir.
And Don, correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't you contact our representative in Washington and verify?
Yes.
That we had to?
Yeah. So I would ask Commissioner Bellflowers, as part of that, that we bring back also what we would need to do in order to make it work? Because I think the memorandum of understanding, you might have to do some changes or you might have, making the rest of the park accessible, not necessarily to the parking lot, but access.
The parking lot's going to be fine, yes, ma'am.
It's just the access, just getting...
I believe parking's fine. It's just the activity itself, we have to make ADA compliant.
Mayor, I think with the parking lot, we have to identify the handicapped, the handicap spaces.
We will have to do that.
Yeah, but that's the only improvement to the parking lot itself.
Right.
Correct, Don?
Yes.
Everything else is in the park.
Right, that's what I'm saying is, once I park, I got to be able to get to the park.
Yeah.
So that's where I think we need that piece with this to make this all work. Otherwise, you got a parking lot, but you don't have access unless we've done our...
There is a connecting piece.
Yes, there is.
There is a connecting piece from the lot to the track.
There's an asphalt piece. I was just there yesterday.
Well...
8.33% is the key number. That's the running slope that you cannot exceed to be ADA compliant.
Is, is that slope not ADA compliant?
That's one in 12, no. Without even measuring it, I tell you, it's not even close.
You're talking about the asphalt lane from the parking lot to?
Yeah.
The inside part of the track?
Yes, sir.
Which is the only entrance? And it's not ADA compliant?
Don't believe so. We'll measure it, you know, and make sure, but off the top of my head, no, sir. That's why we didn't go there to start off with.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
My motion is to direct the town manager to construct an MOU. My motion is to direct the town manager to construct an MOU with the property owner. That, what we're doing here is a separate issue.
Yeah, but they're.
I understand they're linked. I understand they're linked.
All right, finish yours, but you're going to have to do, other pieces got to go with it before you can let the public go on the parking lot. So the memorandum of understanding is something we've got to have too. So you have that motion to have a memorandum of understanding with the two owners. So now, any other discussion, we'll vote on that motion.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
I would like to thank Mr. Bellflowers and Ms. Larson for their conversations this week in getting permission for us to use that parking lot. When I left here last Monday night, the indication I got is they didn't want nothing to do with us, more or less.
Yeah.
They can't, you gotta talk louder, sir. They can't hear you. One thing that's nice is that Mr. McMillan also owns a paving company, so he might be someone that will be good to reach out to as far as that slope.
I have something to say. I asked for this discussion to happen over six months ago. It's all in the minutes. It just didn't work out, I guess, but I appreciate Commissioner Bellflowers and Commissioner Larson getting it done.
Okay.
One team.
Yeah. I have a motion on the floor. All those in favor of crafting an MOU with the owners of the parking lot, please raise your right hand. Seeing none opposed. And then I guess the next would be to investigate what would need to be done. Yeah, Don would need to do an assessment to see what, you know.
We'll have to measure the slopes.
We'll have to measure it.
That's going to be, we have to know what our topography and terrain actually is.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I guess, I guess I just have to ask the question. We've been discussing this for months, I think.
Six months, will be the 30th.
And the board voted to open it April 30th, which is less than 26 days now. And so now, I guess with this said, we're just beginning to, to look at the slope for ADA accessibility?
He's, Don's got, Don's got the slope and the track, a quarter mile track, that is ADA compliant.
Okay.
But not from that parking lot. That's the missing piece.
But that's, you're just talking about the small section, basically, the from the lot to the track, is that, oh, you're really, your main concern is, because you've got the other portion mapped out already?
Yes, ma'am.
That's what I mean, Don.
You have to have access is the key.
The other piece is done, okay. Yep.
So is your motion just to ask the town manager to make this happen?
That, that's where I'm going next.
Here to there.
My motion, Mayor, is to direct, my motion to the board is to direct the town manager to conduct an assessment of the ADA compliance entrance from the parking lot to the track. Am I right, Don, or do I need to add something?
And make it happen.
I'm tracking.
Yeah.
It's, because it sounds like you already have the inside of the track. And now with this, now with this new opportunity from the parking lot to the track, that's, that's going to be another piece.
Another challenge, yes.
It's going to be another challenge. So that's my motion to direct the town manager to conduct an assessment of that piece.
Yeah.
And how soon can you do it, Don?
Can you have it Monday?
Ma'am?
Can you have it Monday? The info?
I'll do my best.
With an update Monday night. How about that?
But the track's going to open up the 30th, so.
Update, update Monday night.
Monday night, okay. And you want them to have the cost of those changes also?
Yes, please. I'm sure it's going to be less than $730,000. No doubt in my mind, it will be less than $730,000. I was there yesterday and witnessed families out there, again, not parked in the parking lot, but they were on the backside.
Did that come from Drew?
And, you know, and I walked it myself again yesterday, thinking of those families and how enjoyable this is going to be, especially now that the lake park's going to be closed in the summer months. This is really, really going to be an opportunity for our community citizens to use the park. It really is. And that's why, Don, I hate to put a short suspense on it, but an update Monday night would really be great. What we need to, what do we need to do to make this happen? Not for me, but for our citizens.
All right, so we have a motion, and all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed? Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Don.
Is there any other things for the good of the board? If not, we appreciate everyone coming this evening. We look forward to seeing you that have been appointed to the Board of Adjustment on Monday night. And do we have a motion?
It's a move.